We are ready. Please start. So, welcome, everyone. We are delighted you are here. Do I need to be pretty close in, huh? Do you hear me? Oh, great. Okay, cool. Welcome for joining us today. My name is Janet Hoy, and I'm a volunteer with the League of Women Voters Diablo Valley. That's in Contra Costa County. And I say that for two reasons. One, because I'm a League member. And two, because I don't live in this district, and I will not be voting in this particular race. I think that's important to know upfront. We are pleased to have as partners today, there's a big list, AAUW Oakland Piedmont Branch, Alameda County Bar Association, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Asian Immigrant Women Advocates, Center for Elders' Independence, Centro Legal de la Raza, East Bay Housing Organizations, National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Oakland Violence Prevention Coalition, Piedmont Pines Neighborhood Association, and SPUR. The League of Women Voters, as you probably know, is an over 100-year-old organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We are strictly nonpartisan. And by "nonpartisan," we mean we never, in any of those 100 years, and including now, ever support or oppose candidates or parties. We do, though, take positions on issues. We are here today with our education hats on. This really doesn't have to do with us. We are facilitating the panel of gentlemen who are here today. Although another part of our organization, the advocacy arm, does indeed take positions on issues. I have a few logistical items to review. The candidates and our community partners have all agreed to participate under the guidelines set for this forum. The candidate forums today are being televised by KTOP, Oakland's cable access station, and livestreamed on the city's website. And I'll give you the website. I missed my spot. OakMTG. The forums are being recorded and can be viewed later on the League of Women Voters of Oakland's website or our YouTube channel. The recording of this event is owned by the League of Women Voters of Oakland. Filming or recording these sessions by anyone other than KTOP is not permitted. We are hosting in-person candidate forums for 13 Oakland races over two Saturdays, today and next Saturday. We have a full day ahead of us. We are presenting eight sessions today and the remaining five on Saturday, October 5th, right here in City Hall. The full schedule can be found on a poster outside the door or on our website, This session is for the position of City Council, District 1. And there are three candidates, as you will see, running for this position: Edward Frank, Len Raphael, and Zach Unger. The candidates participating today met the criteria for participation according to our protocols and ground rules, which you can find on the table outside for your reference. So, here is the process for our forum. Each candidate will have one-and-a-half-minute opening statements. The speaking order has been randomly assigned, and they have agreed to the speaking order. Candidates will then have one-and-a-half minutes to respond to each question. If there is a lightning round, and there might be, those answers will be limited to yes or no. Often a challenge for many of us, right? Particularly candidates. Please keep an eye on the timekeepers here. They will signal candidates with a different color sign, marked "30 seconds." Yep, 30 seconds remaining, and then stop, which means, of course, 30 seconds to go, and then stop talking. There will be no separate rebuttals. However, candidates, you may choose to use some of your minute-and-a-half to rebut the response given by another candidate. Following the questions, each candidate shall have one minute for a closing statement in reverse order from the opening statements. We are handling questions for the candidates in the following manner. Questions for this forum have been prepared in advance by the League of Women Voters and our partners. I already have a list of questions. We will also take live questions from you in the audience. If you would like to ask a question, raise your hand, and this gentleman right here will hand out index cards for you to write your question on. Please write legibly. Otherwise, it will be very difficult, and we will check to make sure they are legible. And also, please, direct your remarks to all three candidates, not a single candidate. We want the candidates to answer each question. Hope that makes sense. Before we begin, candidates, in order to be heard on KTOP's broadcast, you will need to turn on your mic by pushing the "on" button and speaking directly into your microphone. When you are done speaking, please be sure to return your mic to the off position. Kind of makes sense, right? Okay, so let's start with our opening statements. Again, random order. Our first opening statement will be from Edward Frank.
Good morning, and thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for holding this candidate forum and for all the work you've done over the last 100-plus years to educate voters. My name is Edward Frank. I am a homemaker, stay-at-home dad, small-business owner, and parent-volunteer leader at a local elementary school, Emerson Elementary School in the Temescal district in Oakland. I am in this contest to represent my neighborhood or my neighbors in District 1 because of the urging of community members, diverse set of people in my community. They saw the work, the energy, the dedication that I had to our school community, and were inspired by the work I did to reach out to a diverse school site, to build bridges, to host and organize fun events for our children. I want to bring to this position just my ability to build bridges, bring people together, and to find solutions. Right now, there's a lot of combative energy, I feel like, in City Hall, and I want to restore some civility and work together to move Oakland in a direction that feels good to the majority of people in my district. Thank you.
Thank you, Edward. Next, we'll hear from Zach Unger.
Hi there. My name is Zach Unger. I am a lifelong Oakland resident. I actually live on the same street.
My name is Zach Unger. I'm a lifelong Oakland resident. I actually live on the same street that I grew up on. My kids are fond of telling me that that means my life has gone nowhere. I prefer to think that it means that I have a real sense of place in Oakland. Oakland has given me so much, and I feel really indebted to the city. I have my sense of purpose from Oakland, my community. My three kids have had a wonderful education through OUSD. My wife owns a small business here. And I also always say that I am the only candidate who has ever spent the night in every neighborhood in Oakland. And this is not because I have an overactive dating life, but because I've been an Oakland firefighter for 27 years. And as a firefighter, I've really had the chance to be embedded in every community and to hear the concerns and see the differences between all of the different neighborhoods in our diverse city. I've also been the president of our union and an elected union leader for about 20 years. And in that capacity, I've had the chance to work with the city on a lot of different projects, from long-term pension and medical retirement issues to infrastructure plans. And I feel that this is a chance to, like Ed said, bring the temperature down on City Council and really work together, because I think temperament matters here in Oakland. There are so many good ideas and so many good people that I am excited about continuing my career in public service from the other side of the dais, working with all of the folks here in Oakland to come up with solutions that really matter for our citizens.
Thank you, Zach. And now, Len.
Hi, I'm Len Raphael. Hi, I'm Len Raphael. Thank you for inviting me here. In many ways, I have seen my role over the many years I've been in Oakland similar to that filled by the League of Women Voters, which is educating voters in Oakland. And in my case, I educate voters in Oakland about fiscal matters, about crime matters, and have even touched on OUSD matters over the years. Unlike the League of Women Voters, I've done that through social media. Now, people will say, "Oh, he's just a blogger." But no, I actually take that role extremely seriously. I fact-checked everything I put on there. Now, going forward here, I started off in Oakland in the early '70s by opening an auto shop on 40th Street in Oakland with two of my friends. On our very first night, our entire shop was burgled. All our equipment was stolen. Ever since then, in Oakland, I've always had a burglar alarm. Since that time, I was with that business for five years. Then I went back to school, became a CPA, went to UC Berkeley, starting, and now I have three main issues for people, which is doubling the number of police, moving homeless people off public property, and last of all, produce a sustainable budget that can pay for more police and pay for core vital services. Thank you.
Thank you, Len. And thank you all for your opening statements. We will now move on to questions. And the first question, I will ask all three, but we will start with Edward. And the first two questions actually have to do with experience and priorities. First question is, if you are elected, what will be your top priorities?
If elected, my top priorities are to increase accessibility to me by my constituents in District 1 so that they felt heard, and I can then relay their concerns and ideas even to the rest of the council and to the mayor and the city administrator. My priorities will be to support our most disadvantaged, our children and our elders. I would love to see us invest more money in our young people. I believe that if we make that investment today, it's going to pay off big time in 10, 15, 20 years. So, those investments we make today are going to be the solutions that are going to pan out in the future. I believe when, you know, developing, we can't just develop for development's sake. We need to develop with the knowledge that there's a climate crisis. There are environmental problems that we need to take these things into account. We need to look to models around the country and around the world for ways to develop sustainably. And really, I would love to see Oakland be a leader in supporting young people, elders, and sustainable development.
Thank you, Edward. Zach?
Thank you. So, my top priorities are public safety.
Top priority is public safety. That's what I hear most when I've been knocking doors. I think that we've been fed a really crass discourse online that says that we can either have public safety or we can have civil rights. And I think that's a false choice. I think we can and must have a police department that keeps us safe while also not compromising our values. I think it is reasonable to try to grow the police department from where it has a tritted down to now. I think we have too few police officers. We also have too few police officers on the street at any one time. We have a lot of officers in the building. I am a big fan of the non-armed response programs that we have, such as ceasefire and MACRO. I'm really proud of the fact that I worked to bring MACRO under the umbrella of the Fire Department. I think we can leverage technology. And I think we also need to partner with our state and county and federal law enforcement partners in order to break up these criminal gangs, because it's not a success to arrest the kid who's breaking into your car window. You need to go up the chain to the folks who are helping him resell that iPad the next day. So, I think that's very critical. Affordable housing is the moral failure of our time. I don't even like to call it a crisis because that suggests that it was not of our making. We made policy choices as a society over the last 50 years that have left our neighbors unhoused and underhoused. And then finally, I think the last priority is making sure that we have effective, responsive city services. And I plan to be someone who listens and someone who hears and holds regular town halls.
Great. Thank you, Zach. And Len?
My overweening perspective and point of view is to change budget priorities at City Hall. Without changing budget priorities, talking about adding more police, providing services, is our empty campaign slogans. In particular, as I listen to my colleagues here, now, unlike them, I would change the priorities so we do not try to fix massive societal problems that we can't possibly make a dent in. No, I would not have the city focus on environmental problems. I would not have them focus on providing affordable housing and fixing racial injustice. Yes, I have to advocate for those at the state and federal level. But no, our priorities for budgeting should be on providing more police, make sure they're accountable, make sure they're tightly managed, moving the homeless off the streets, and making a sustainable budget that regains the trust of the voters, because we will need a massive parcel tax to even balance our current budget, which has the wrong priorities.
Thank you, Len. We'll move on to the second question, and we'll start with you again, Len. The question is, what is the most impactful talent or experience you would bring to the City Council role?
I would say impactful. What I've learned over the years when I ran for city auditor, that was in 2014, I actually was endorsed by the local Democratic Caucus. And actually, what I learned was when I then went to the police OPOA endorsement, they told me they were only going to have me in as a courtesy to several of the council members who had endorsed me and were strong supporters. They said, "No way are we going to let you in there because you're a strong police accountability advocate." And in fact, I have been the treasurer of the Police Accountability Coalition for seven years, ending in January of this year. When I went to the firefighters, they said essentially the same thing, except they weren't concerned about police accountability. They said, "We don't like your platform issue that says you want to discuss how we can set aside the funding for our retirement obligations one second before they have to be paid, because we're going to get paid, and the voters will go crazy." And I would say that's part of what Zach calls pension reform. With my understanding, what he did there was he stretched the repayment of the old ancient Pfeiffer's Retirement Plan into the future, the ultimate kicking the can down the road, which is what we face.
Thank you, Len. Next is Edward.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
What is the most impactful talent or experience you would bring to the City Council role?
Most impactful talent I would bring to the City Council role is one of my ability to communicate well and authentically with a diverse group of people. I feel like I'm able to connect authentically with a diverse set of neighbors and people, whether they be government bureaucrats or the unhoused person under the underpass. I would also bring my knowledge of what I don't know and bring curiosity and openness to the position. Ask a lot of questions and bringing a lot of policy professionals and advocates to the table to develop policy to move us forward in a way that honors many voices and wishes in the community.
Thank you, Edward. Zach?
So, as I mentioned in my opening, I think temperament is really important, and the ability to work together is key, because we are a city that agrees on a lot of things, but we also have a lot of fractious issues. And I think that if you look at my list of endorsements, you're going to see a lot of politicians you like. You're going to see some politicians you don't like. You're going to see some politicians I don't like. And you're going to see some politicians who really don't like each other. And I take this as a badge of honor, that politicians who don't agree agree that I'm someone who can work through the middle. And I've already found this as a talent and something that I've done in the past with Oakland City Council members, is help to bring people towards an agreement that doesn't necessarily make everyone ecstatic, but that everyone can live with. I think it is very important that the City Council not continually be litigating the last fight, but working together to come up with solutions for the next issue. And I consider myself a relentless pragmatist. And I think that we need people who don't think that the City Council is a launching pad to their presidential run, but someone who just wants to be here and do the work that's in front of us. Like I said, I live on the same street I grew up on. I'm not going anywhere. And I think that a career in public service is a really valuable way to become a City Council member, because we cannot descend into the sort of chaos and backstabbing that we've had before. And I do think that we have issues in Oakland that require working together with people who we don't agree with all the time.
Thank you, Zach. And we're going to stay with you, Zach, for the next question, question three. If you were elected, how do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in Oakland?
So, I've already knocked on over 7,000 doors just by myself, not with my supporters, just me going door-to-door, because I find it incredibly valuable to talk to folks in the neighborhoods. And I'm not just saying this as like, "Oh, I need to service my constituents." The reason I need to hear from constituents is that I am quite clear-eyed about the fact that I don't know everything. And in addition to talking to folks to hear their concerns, I need that feedback. I need that input, because I am not an expert on what happens on each individual block, and I am not an expert on every issue that comes to the fore in Oakland. And so, for me, talking to constituents is not just to service constituents, but because I need the help and because I need the advice. There is so much expertise, and there is so much good knowledge in Oakland that I want to avail myself of that. As a union president, my job is listening to people all day, taking phone calls, taking meetings. And I don't necessarily have the ability to fix everyone's problems, but that ability to be heard is really crucial. And I promise that I will be available to my constituents, that I will hold regular town halls. And the door-knocking has been wonderful. You know, I have door-knocked in neighborhoods where people open the door and say, "You know what? Nobody's ever come to our door before. There's never been a politician here who's even tried to connect with us." And that shouldn't be shocking to me, but apparently, that is the norm. And so, the door-knocking, I was dreading it, to be honest, at first, but it's become something of an addiction, and I've been loving all the conversations I've had with our residents in D1.
Great. Thank you, Zach. Excuse me. Next, Len?
Yeah, actually, much like Zach, it's actually liberating to talk to residents when you canvass them. And it's really interesting what you learn from them. I have a little problem with Zach saying what his endorsements mean, okay? If you look at my endorsements, I do not have any incumbent official other than an elected Bart person from Contra Costa. And then I have Pat Kearneyhan, retired councilwoman. When everyone else are just ordinary citizens, okay? Where Zach has every politician except for Biden, Harris, and Newsom. Now, he would have you interpret that to mean they think he's wonderful. I would interpret that, and many other people would say, "He's more of the same." And it's a quid pro quo in the endorsement game. I think voters have learned that, that endorsements, when you're a firefighter's president, you get endorsements from people who want the firefighter's endorsements in the future or have gotten them in the past. I'm sure some of them know him and think he's great, but I think most of them are quid pro quo.
Thank you, Len. Edward?
If elected, I would continue to just be a person of the community. It's already just how I carry myself is my role as the PTA president or the former PTA parent group at Emerson. And I find just great comfort, and it fills me with energy to connect with neighbors, whether I'm just biking down the street with my kids in the cargo bike and stopping and talking to people, or whether I'm breaking bread with neighbors. Just that connection with community is what is driving me to enter this contest in the first place. Yeah, regularly holding town halls, sending out newsletters, just having open office hours multiple times a month. Like Zach was saying, there's just so much ingenuity and just great ideas in our community that to not get out there and not to absorb all that resourceful knowledge and information, especially from our elders, like they have so many answers. They're just rich with wisdom, and to ignore them or to not listen to them is a disservice to our city. So, I would just continue reaching out and being a person of my community.
Thank you, Edward. We're going to start with you for question number four. Do City Council members have a conflict of interest, given that they participate in negotiations for city workers' compensation and also receive contributions for their campaigns from these workers' unions?
One could say that there may be a conflict of interest there. I'll answer that by saying I'm running a money-free campaign. I'm not accepting contributions from anybody. I'm just literally DIY-ing this and connecting with neighbors and talking with people as I move about the world. I'm kind of grossed out by the amount of shiny flyers that end up in my mailbox at election time and all the signs that just blow around in the gutter after each election. So, when the current council member told me that I had to raise six figures to be a realistic candidate in this contest, that really turned me off, and I took it as a challenge to do things differently, because I think things do need to happen differently. Politics needs to change in Oakland, and I'm like walking that change as I'm mindfully walking for District 1.
Thank you, Edward. Len?
I much agree with Edward about the role of money here. Special interests include unions. Special interests include unions. In the past, it used to be real estate money that dominated Oakland funding, campaign funding. Now it's unions. And part of the problem, actually, are the voters, because voters here rarely ever give money to local candidates. Over 1,000 people I've spoken to, I've asked them, how many of them gave anything to a local candidate? Maybe 10 of them said they had. And how many of them gave to national candidates? 20% of them. That is a problem with the voters, okay? Now, as far as the role and the influence of money on politics here, I think Dan Lindheim, the former city administrator for Delam, said it absolutely correctly on KQED interview a couple of months ago when he was asked what he would have done if he were in Mayor Tao's shoes with the budget. He said, she should have gotten concessions from all the unions, but she and the council can't because they owe their jobs to the city unions, and that is a problem.
Thank you, Len. Zach?
Thank you. So we all come from somewhere. We all have backgrounds, we all have allegiances, we all have people who support us. And Oakland is a small town. I do come from a labor background, and I'm never going to apologize for the fact that I'm supported by the brave men and women who have sworn an oath to give their lives for everybody in this room and everybody in the city of Oakland. I do think that we all have to take stands that sometimes are against and sometimes for our folks. I am really proud of the fact that I have been endorsed not only by labor unions, but by people who would never hire union work. I've been endorsed by tenants' rights folks, and I've been endorsed by landlords and supported by both of them. And so there's something liberating in the knowledge that every vote that I take, I will be disappointing somebody who has supported me financially. And that kind of frees me up to vote the way that I think is correct for the citizens of Oakland, and if people don't like it, they can vote me out of there, and I'm going to be all right. I do think that we are more than just our backgrounds. We are all composed of different parts. I am from a labor union background, but I also have three kids in OUSD. My wife owns a small business. I am a passionate advocate of the libraries. I use our natural resources. We all come from somewhere. Everyone has a background, and if you're looking for somebody who has no friends and no allegiances and no background in Oakland to be your elected official, you're going to need to find an infant to elect and preferably an orphan so that they have no ties to anybody.
Thank you, Zach. The next question comes from the audience, and we're going to start again with Edward. Please identify two things you would do to provide housing and services to the homeless.
Two things I would do to provide services and housing to the homeless. First, I would say that just in any efforts we have to address and provide resources to our unhoused population, I would love to see us prioritize families with young children and the elderly. Those are people that end up on the streets, sometimes for reasons beyond their control. And I think if we are going to collectively help people on the streets, we should prioritize those people. I think providing renter protections for people who have, that's not people on the streets yet, though, but providing renter protections keeps people from being on the streets. So I think keeping people housed is very important as a preventative measure. I think just working with county, state, federal agencies to get all the resources we can, to do whatever we can in this city to provide stable housing. The Homes Act in Massachusetts and our federal government is working on being passed, and there's a lot of sort of progressive, great ideas in there. So I would bring local organizations to the table to help develop best practices for these, and it's got to be taken on a case-by-case basis because there's so many different, it's like a kaleidoscope of people on the streets that need help, whether it's substance abuse or...
Thank you, Edward. Next, Zach.
So I'm a big fan of Project Home Key and our tiny cabin communities. Transitional housing, I think, is a really key way that we can provide housing to folks. Now, none of us want to see people living in tough sheds for long-term periods of time, but what we find is that about 50% of people who are placed into transitional housing find permanent, long-term housing within one year. And I think that's a really valuable thing to do. I think we need to, everything becomes easier when you have a roof over your head. You are more likely to be able to get to your job interview on time. You're more likely to eat well. You're more likely to be able to deal with your medical and behavioral health issues. So I think that getting people housed is incredibly important. I think we need to provide services to homeless folks. We can't just harden our hearts to everyone who is unhoused. We need to help people get the medical and behavioral health services they need. I think that Oakland has taken on a lot of the role that the county should take on. We need to devolve a lot of the healthcare and other social services back to the county because we can't afford it, quite frankly, and we need to make sure that the county is doing its part. I think that often, people become unhoused over just a few hundred dollars, and then getting them rehoused costs exponentially more than that. So I do believe that we need to help folks stay in their homes, and we need to protect folks from predatory landlords who would evict them over unconscionable reasons. So keeping people housed and then getting people into transitional housing are key goals.
Thank you, Zach. And Len?
I'm gratified to see that Zach has modified his platform to say that we're trying to do things that the county should do. It has been my platform all along that we're trying to do things that counties on homelessness that the county, state, and federal government should be doing. And just for the record, I'd say, look, and he's also, by the way, moved his platform to say we should enforce our encampment policy and move people off of public places that are in violation of the encampment policy. My policy all along has been move people off public spaces of all kinds, get the parks back. Again, my policy is to move them out of sight, but not out of mind, okay? I'm very clear that I keep them in mind. My policy, however, would be for things like, I would not have approved, put Measure U on the ballot. We should not have used city parcel taxes to pay for permanent housing at $800,000 or $900,000 a pop when you can't possibly make a dent in the homeless crisis by that. Transitional housing is fine. Using that money for permanent housing is nuts. That is why the Building Trade Unions gave several hundred thousand to Mayor Tao's campaign when she ran. They knew what she was going to do with Measure U.
Thank you, Len. The next and final question, so we have time for the closing remarks, we'll start with Zach, and this also came from the audience. Can you please detail one non-police public safety policy proposal that you have that does not require new funding?
So, MACRO is a project that we... MACRO is a project that has a large amount of state funding at this time. I do think we need to really lean into MACRO in order to bring behavioral health responses. Sometimes when a gun is introduced to a situation with behavioral health responses, that is not always the best outcome. And as a paramedic who's provided care in homeless camps, I know that I am not always the best-trained person to provide care. So I think that MACRO is a program that we need to continue and expand. You know, there's nothing that is totally free. I do believe in leveraging technology. I think that we can leverage technology like drones and license plate readers and speed cameras in order to be a force multiplier for our police officers. And then I also think we need to really lean into enforcing significant crimes. I'm not interested in criminalizing poverty, you know, the broken taillights, but we need to have high-profile policing of crimes that matter to us. There's a firehouse that I work at frequently in East Oakland, and in front of the firehouse, there is open-air sex trafficking going on at 10:00 a.m. on a Tuesday morning, and these guys drive in from, you know, the suburbs somewhere. And I feel like if we were to change our priorities to arrest 50 of them over the course of a month, wherever they talk to each other on the internet, word would get out that Oakland is no longer open for criminal business, and you can't just come here and be lawless and expect to have no repercussions.
Thank you, Zach. Next, Len?
Well, the first thing that I say has to be done that doesn't cost us a nickel, at least the voters of Oakland, would be to recall the DA. Without the DA being replaced with someone reasonable, arresting people is not going to make a nevermind because the DA doesn't even charge juveniles if they don't use violence. She just lets them go. So the cops don't even bother arresting juveniles for stealing cars or shoplifting, okay? That would be number one. And if you ask Zach, he'll tell you, he opposes her recall. The second thing I would do is I would change the city's policies on pursuits. That was rejected by the civilian review board the other day. They rejected it. San Francisco voters passed Measure E. We can have reasonable standards for pursuits. Right now, it's almost impossible to pursue unless a gun is being used or violence is being used. Those are two things I would do. The last thing I would do is I would go to the federal judge and ask that this overseer be replaced. He is required, he keeps moving the goalposts on our police, they have absurd amount of time, they spend filling out reports for internal affairs, for the federal people, the federal overseer, and the civilian review board. They've done that in San Francisco, we should do that.
Thank you. Len? Edward?
I think communication is key here. As I understand it, oftentimes jurisdictions aren't communicating with each other. We in Oakland don't live in a bubble. It's not as if all of the criminal activity just stays within our borders. Law enforcement needs to better communicate within the county and within just city departments to be able to work in a coordinated effort to break up more established criminal rings that are sort of perpetuating and fueling some of the criminal activities in our city. Yeah, and investing in things like, or just keeping programs like MACRO funded and giving them an honest chance to be able to help address the nonviolent sort of mental health crises that oftentimes our officers are burdened with responding to. Giving that program a fair chance to really take hold and thrive, I think, is important.
Thank you, Edward, and thanks to all the candidates for making succinct answers to the questions. Very much appreciated. We're now moving into closing statements. You will each have one minute, and we're going to do the closing statements in reverse order of the opening statements, so we'll start with Len.
I have been an activist in both recalls for totally different reasons. You've heard my reason for why I believe the DA should be recalled. I would also, I would add to that, the reason I want, and I've worked extensively on recalling the mayor, unlike Zach, who's endorsed by the mayor and opposes her recall and helped get her elected, is one major thing, which is her failure to fulfill her charter responsibility to prepare and submit a sustainable budget. She failed twice. She had two shots at it, and both times she failed. Three of the council members objected and rejected the budget. I've never seen three council members rejecting it before. I spoke too. They were overruled by the majority.
Thank you, Len. Zach?
So, thank you to the League for being here, and thank you to all of the folks in the audience. Thank you to everyone in the League for being here, and thank you to the folks in the audience and on TV for being here. I really appreciate your commitment to Oakland, and I appreciate the fact that you've let me be a firefighter for the last 27 years. It is the greatest honor of my life to have been able to serve the citizens of Oakland like that. I reject the notion that Oakland is over, that Oakland is done. I believe that we have great resources in the city and that we have suffered through some tough times recently, but we can come back from them. I am not a fan of the online discourse that says that we have to give up on the city, and that's not what I'm hearing when I knock on doors. I do believe that we have a lot of issues that we can deal with in terms of job training. I think that that is one of our long-term solutions to crime. I think that we need to create more economic development in Oakland. We are not simply going to be able to arrest our way out of the crime problem in Oakland, but we can do strategic policing now and long-term growth of our economics and our young folks to have better opportunities.
Thank you, Zach. And Edward?
Thanks again, everybody, and for the League of Women Voters and my fellow candidates for stepping into this race and stepping up to public service. My grandfather, a Vietnam War veteran, a very conservative guy, carries a pistol and a Constitution in his fanny pack. I don't see eye to eye with him politically, but he always bemoaned the fact that there are too many politicians and not enough citizen-states people. He thinks that, and I am here sort of embodying that sentiment. I'm a, like I said, I'm a stay-at-home dad, I'm a homemaker, I'm a baker, and a community volunteer. I am endorsed by only neighbors and people who have just recently gotten to know me, but I'm bringing with me, like I said, the values of community, care, curiosity to this role and just wanting to engage and move Oakland in a sustainable ethical direction.
Thank you, Edward, and let's give a quick round of applause to our candidates and the audience. Okay, keeping an eye on the time, I want to thank everyone for being here.
Could you just repeat where we decided to begin?
Yes, I will. I was going to get to that. Thank you for the reminder. This forum will be rebroadcast on KTOP, Oakland's Government Access Cable Channel, on Channel 10 on Xfinity Comcast, or Channel 99 on AT&amp;T U-verse. It will also be posted to the League of Women Voters website, as well as our YouTube channel. So, election is coming up, November 5th. We encourage everybody to use Vote411. That is the premier online voter election tool that will give you a customized ballot, give you information from candidates in their own words, unedited by the League of Women Voters, as well as information on the 10, I repeat, 10 statewide ballot initiatives, and a whole bunch, I understand, local ballot initiatives, three on your local ballot here. Inform yourself. You'll feel better when you fill out your ballot when you are informed. Ballots will begin to be mailed, and they will come to every registered voter October 7, and you have 24 early vote centers. Yay! We are making voting very accessible to everybody. Please do it. It is not only your civic duty, but your future and our kids' future and my grandkids' future depends on it. Thank you again very much. [applause][1751.73]